It's on.
There is no other illness other than COVID.
The blue flu, the black flu.
None of that exists. COVID.
On Facebook or Google. There's another variants coming out.
A new one?
Yeah.
After all the crap?
It started in France or England?
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. Mr. President's not here, the fiscal officer, and we don't have a left it officers right now. I'll go ahead and start the meeting, so can we please stand and say the Project Legions?
Project Legions, to fly the United States of America into your Republic, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence to honor our military firefighters' role work in the sheriff's deputy as a servant committee here and abroad? Okay. Roll call. Mike, Michael Mc, M. Michael McLaughlin.
President.
James McGuire. And maybe Roy Mann, I guess. Sheila back. Sheila back.
Good morning, President.
So now, I'm gonna call for...
It's on the same page, but I'm under.
Okay, I'm gonna call for nomination for electing the trustee president, and at that point, then the president will take over. So there any nomination for president?
I'll make a nomination that Mike McLaughlin be president.
Can we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now trustee McLaughlin, you will take over as president.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we nominate Jim McGuire as vice president. And you second.
I second the motion.
Oh, roll call.
Would you put a yea, your name? All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor, aye. Aye. There you are. Opposed? Okay, then, last but not least, an nominee will have Sheila back as a trustee for the year 2022.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Yea.
Aye.
Yea. Opposed? Therefore, it would be resolved that Jefferson Township Board of Trustees swear in the board of trustees president, Michael McLaughlin, on Tuesday, January the fifth, at six P. M. at the Catamount Center. We'll sign your copy here.
Yeah, let me write on the hand.
Okay.
So we're gonna put square again.
My company booked us last year. Took the PDF and this made more than it.
Okay. This is the resolution number.
Was it? Was it?
You put about what?
You gonna do that?
It's zero, zero, one.
Okay. You put it down how? Initially?
Don't forget to miss the handle.
What is the resolution?
Pre-voting?
That, that was the resolution number?
Oh, zero, zero, one.
So what we do, whatever things hand written in here, Sheila, we have to initial it. So I initial there for all those three. This is what any time you think is written in by hand, the resolution has to be initialized. Trustee's. It's been stacked up. Okay, so next on the agenda is review or approval of part of meeting minutes. And there's noting here that the meeting minutes will be addressed in resolutions a little later in the meeting. Number six on the agenda is a fiscal office report. Tracy, floor.
So, do you want to go with the budget now, or? Because the only thing I have right now, I've had, I sent you guys, and I don't know if I sent Sheila. I sent you the reports for November and December in the email. Did you get that, Sheila?
No.
Okay.
I just had the one beginning today.
So I sent those in the mail. I don't have anything for this meeting because now that I work for the New Year, we're doing stuff in the New Year. Those reports aren't gonna be exactly accurate because we're closing out the overview. So, the latest I have is in December. So did you want to start with the budget, or you want to do that later?
Yes, yes. So the, in the budget, the revenues are pretty much, not much change or that's information that you gave from the county.
Yeah, I came from the county.
And the county, so there's not much argument there.
It's what you guys approved on October fifth, on October fifth.
Yes. Yes, okay, so.
Then, okay, so then appropriations. I had to give, I had to give the numbers, you know, how much we appropriated. I had to get that to match, so we didn't have more appropriate than we had in the revenue. So, looking at that piece of paper, I mean, looking at that resolution. Say, for instance, look at the general total on the revenue.
The revenue, aye.
Yes.
And what page is that, Tracy?
That's the first page of the revenue, the one of three.
One of, one of three.
One of three.
So.
At the bottom it says general total.
Okay.
Okay, that's, look at that total, and then look at the first page of one of, one of, not one of.
Eleven.
Not one of eleven, but look at page three of eleven.
Wow.
Okay, see how much we have this year appropriated? I mean, for the revenue, see how much we have appropriated? Okay?
Yes.
But we have rollover, so that's why I was able to book it.
So, I know I've had this argument just about every year in that. I know you got to conduct business like that, but I, I don't, I think if you continue to conduct business like that and you're paying, you just keep spending your rollover, we're gonna go broke.
That's what we did.
So we need to fine tune that, and I, and then, I mean, it's gonna take a while to figure out where we are from last year and get all the bills in, decide where we are, but I might, me myself, I think for 2022, big purchases that have not already been made need to stop. I don't think, I think we need to invest to repair what we have, keep what we have going, and try, we might get a handle on that right there, that first part, spend more out than we have coming in. If you're spending the rollover, something like that.
I agree, we need to first kind of pull back, look at our expenditure, see where we're at in the report based on that because at this point, we're really not sure exactly where we're at. With all the invoices that are still coming in, we couldn't even include that. So that's being included in 2022 budget, right?
Some of them, there's not a whole bunch, there's not as many as you think, because I got a lot of them taken care of.
Okay.
So it's not as many as you think. This is a temporary budget, and so I just did what I was told to take what we had, all the numbers we had in appropriation last year and just kind of roll over to this year. And so, that's why you're gonna see this, there could be a lot of changes to adjust.
And there again, we had no budget meetings, so I believe that, and I think we ought to do one between now and two weeks from now. We ought to set up a special meeting.
We would definitely have to do one, because this is temporary, we don't permanently do one a, so we definitely have to do at least one, but I suggest we do also another one after that, at least another one, to check that's like halfway through the years that we need to adjust.
So that was when we were planning another budget meeting, right?
At least one. Me myself, I think I would need at least a week to decipher this, get my head into it.
Well, I think we probably need to wait to maybe talk in the January to kind of like see what all the work went.
Well, even September.
See what bills come in that, yeah, what bills come in we don't know about, like that fifteen thousand dollars a day, that kind of thing, so.
Because at the end of January, I have to provide the county appropriations, I mean, our revenue, what, what? They're gonna give me the actual, yeah, they're gonna give me in a few months, they're gonna quote that with our actual amount.
Okay.
But they were actually calculated, because they gave us estimate in October.
Yes.
And then I'll be able to prepare a report to them, and then they'll give us a certificate of estimated resource because then that's what we will base our budget on for April, April first.
Okay, I understand.
So I'll have to explain that process to you later. So, I just took the example, the general one, but all across the board, all the parts are the same one. You know?
Okay, so.
We have more spending out there to come in this year.
Really don't think we have the time or the energy tonight to decipher, go line by line like we do in a budget meeting, and go down there on every COVID item, and you're spending this much for this and that much for this, and move things up and down a little bit. Don't have the knowledge to, of what we need to do yet tonight, and I think we just need to go ahead and prove this so we can keep paying, so we can keep paying bills for now.
Right, so getting into the tough software, and I can pay the bills.
So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash oh, oh, two. Adopting the 2022 Temporary Budget effective January first of 2022.
I second the motion.
You can't do that. You can't do it in a work session.
Excuse me?
Can't make a motion in a work session.
This is a meeting?
No, it's a work session.
Nope.
No.
It's a regular meeting.
No, it's a session.
There's no work session because it's the first meeting I've been here.
I'll shut up, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I was a little confused.
Just, Justin, that.
You voted against it.
Yes.
Justice McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Um, not an initial, it's not R.
Oh, sorry.
It's a K.
Probably typed in the line. This is on the place. Um, so also, I wanted to share with you the appropriation ledger for the CARES Act, all the money that's spent. I reported to the federal, government. You see at the bottom of the, on the front of the page, that a hammer written tells you what we received in and what we spent in twenty-one and twenty-two. It totals up to that amount, and then here's all the ledger. All the ledger, all the things we spent on, I did not record, I did not record. So you can look at that in your ledger, and I have all documentation in the files if you need to see any of it.
So do we need to, do you think we need to sign or you want, we just have done deals, or is there something else we need to do?
I just want you to know this.
Okay.
So, so, so the last portion, which I would spend for the, was it for the fire apparatus?
Protective, protective.
Okay, so, so they, they've already, they checked our business now?
Yeah. I guess I would need the motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal office report, pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, and boards.
I second the motion.
Justice McLaughlin?
Yes.
Justice Mc, hmm, Justice McLaughlin.
Yes.
I gotta get used to the handle.
Okay, so next is old business, we don't have anything on here for old business. But I did receive a phone call, a word of advice to the work we've done at Station Fifty-nine. And I did have a conversation with the people that did that, they do need paid. But I still have an issue, and I know that we're watching this video, but the problem I have is I don't want to get myself, I don't want to get the township in a legal issue in that there's verbiage out there, it's, it limits ORC, that anything over fifty thousand dollars has to go out to three bids. The original bid on this is questionable, if they had three or not, that has nothing to do with this contractor, that is internal. There's no proof that we had three bids in the beginning, because the job started. And then, so, in getting close to get being done, the price went from forty-seven, forty-eight thousand to over fifty-three. And I sent an email to legal, asked me about that, and they were hard and determined that that has to go out to rebid. And in the meeting, Steve Wolf was up that that's gonna cost all kinds of extra money, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. You wanted to, and then man and McGuire made it happen, it went through. So until I have a response from legal that in paying fifty, over fifty thousand for this, and it wasn't three bids, I'm gonna get mine in a sling down the road in an audit, I don't want to end up in front of a judge once. So either legal says yes, you can pay that, and I'd sign for it, they did the work, they need paid. I mean, I have issues with the amount of money we paid for that, but the board, the board of trustees approved that, so they need paid. But I also have legal issues in the fact that I don't want to get in trouble that it's not done by the rules that are set for townships to operate. And so, I just wanted, under old business, I would bring that up, because I was asked about this by the contractor today.
Oh, Mike, so can you tell me what the original price was for the first bid?
The original price for what else?
The first bid, or, or not the first bid, I'm sorry, the original cost, what they were charging us originally, where, where it began, and then.
The first bid we had was sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. And so we got a bid for sixteen thousand five. The township had moved, the road, road guy over to the fire department, made him an operations director. And he's pretty mechanically inclined, and he and the fire chief decided, well, we can do it in-house for under ten. So let's do that, and then that was stopped because the right permits were not, and I understand that. But instead of, okay, well, let's back up and get the right permits, oh, no, no, you guys can't do that, we'll put that, blah, 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 blah. There again, it was never three bids. So we went sixteen five to forty, forty-seven, six fifty-four. So I have a hard time understanding.
Were there any additions that caused it to go down?
What, the forty-seven?
Yeah, were there any changes to what they were?
So let's get, go back a little bit farther, this originally there were under the CARES Act.
This sixteen five was before that.
Yeah, but then they put it on the CARES Act, and they said they wanted to do the CARES Act.
Let's get the, let's get the timetables, the timetable set. So, we had a contractor in there doing work on the roof. While you're here, give us a price on doing the bathrooms, we need to take one bathroom, make it two bathrooms. Okay, we're gonna do that. So he gave us a price of sixteen five, and then, no, 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 we're gonna do that. So, no, and we started to do work in-house, we got stopped because we didn't have right permits. So then we put it out the bid, and supposedly got two bids, I only sold one. But the, the leading minute showed, say that we had two bids, you need three. And then, after those, after that bid process started, then the COVID money came.
CARES.
The CARES Act money came out. So let's put that to CARES Act, and we went around about that, and legal said, no, you can't do that, and we don't want it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm just trying to see where it started and where it ended, and so. Well, do we have documentation, shouldn't we have documentation of the bids that we're saying?
We should, we don't. I never received those documentation, the only thing I got was when they started with the CARES Act.
So when bids come in, you actually get them, right?
I should.
Okay.
Policies and procedures that need to change.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, on one hand, I believe the contract, the contractor, this is an internal issue. Uh, I would, we can point fingers at different things, but the contractor did the work, the board of trustees approved that. They need paid. But I also got to make sure that we are legally okay in paying that bill. So that's where I stand with it.
You just have, you just need backup for what you're saying.
Yes. Okay, and that's new business. That's new. Um, I was going to ask today, but nobody here to answer the question, we passed a resolution. Oh, yeah. Resolution twenty-one oh nine four. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve the reopening of Jefferson Township Station Fifty-nine at noon on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Blah, 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 blah. And we went through there, we made some changes, and we had a verbal, if you listen to, if you watch the video, we had a verbal that we were told that we weren't gonna open unless we had all of the approved permits. I have spoken to the people downtown, and I'm just curious, I was gonna ask the fire chief where we stand on that.
So he didn't give it to you after?
I've not seen it. So, but I'm not gonna go into details of what I discussed downtown, or let's, let's see what the fire chief has to say. Okay, so, uh, next thing is new business. In the new business. Okay, people, I've had an issue with the way these meetings have been run for a while. And you have different Robert's Rules of Order, you have different things in the way you're supposed to conduct these meetings. And if you look at the agenda today, comments by citizens, it's not on there. And I didn't take it off because I don't want to hear from you. And there was a rule out there that's been trying to push, been trying to be pushed through several times in my tenure here, that we don't have to let you talk. I totally disagree with that. You put me in office. So, in reading, and there's a book made by Miami University, the Trustees Source Book. And it talks in there about how, what you can and can't do. And basically, in the meetings, we can decide how we want these meetings, the three of us can decide how we want these meetings to operate. And you need a uniformity, it's kind of like playing, you know, playing games with the kids, or playing games. You can't change the rules through the games, or, you know, a couple months down the road, change it. But, and so this might be, it'll take a little time to get everything on or down. But if we're talking about a resolution, we're talking about something, feel like school, where's your hand? We'll acknowledge you, and for the legal aspect of it, in the recording, you'll have to state your name, who you are. But if you got a question, we're talking about a resolution, feel free to ask. Okay? The other thing I have an issue with is when we, when we, we're gonna do, when we bring up a resolution. Well, I don't really know how to vote on that, I got some questions before I want to vote on that, or make a second on it. And I'm not being allowed to ask any questions until I get a second. That's gonna change. We can do whatever we want, long as we stay uniform and do the same things all the time. So, we bring a resolution out on the floor, I feel that we should be able to ask, ask questions about it, talk about it, and then decide if you want to give it, if you want to vote on it, if you want to give it a second, give it a possibility to pass. So, these, anyway, meeting procedures, I want to be more involved with residents in this town. Okay, the next thing we have, we'll start in on the resolutions.
You want to talk about the oil?
Hmm?
And one bill?
Okay, well, I'm sorry, yes, so in a new business, another thing in a new business, and here again, nobody's here to ask. Look at two different things here. So we received a bill today for fifteen thousand dollars to replace two heaters in Station Sixty, the one we used to have in meetings at. And my issue is.
I thought it was in Fifty-nine.
Oh, it is?
Yes, that's.
Okay, so, okay, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong location, Fifty-nine. But still, the point is, to spend fifteen thousand dollars, Sheila, there is a procedure. You can't, no one person, sorry, can spend that kind of money without the board of trustees approving. So who approved this? That's what I was gonna ask tonight, who authorized this?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
I sent an email to the company, and I asked them, you know, did you get a purchase order? And they said, yes, we got a purchase order from Mr. Wolf, and he gave me some, not even our purchase number, six thousand three dash oh three, or six thousand one dash oh two.
That's how I remember this work.
No, I told him that.
Okay.
And then she sent me a copy of the email, show where he asked for it.
Showed Wolf?
Yeah. It was fifty, sixty and fifty-nine.
You know how it is.
So, so would, Mr. Wolf, did he have the, is that something in his job description that he could do? Or does he, is there a certain amount of money that he has to come to the trustees for approval?
I always, I, I always thought that we had to think that it's, it was seven hundred fifty, it went to twenty-five hundred. Anything over twenty-five hundred has to have a board approval. It's surely not fifteen thousand.
So.
But we'll, we'll discuss this, we'll meet at the next meeting when we have more people.
What next meeting?
Two weeks.
Oh, well, well, I've got some questions I want to ask now. So, so when he went, he just gave them a number out of nowhere? It's not, it's not even our. It's not even our PO number?
No, and he does that, he's done that on other fields and other places too. I was looking at the company has a PO number, and I said, it's not even our PO number. And I called him, and I'm like, where'd you get that purchase order number? And they say, well, that's what they told me when they came in and get to make the purchase.
So it was two, wasn't it, two purchases that he made, was it zero, zero, two and zero, zero?
Three, on this one, and then they made several purchases at other vendors. And I'm not sure what their number, those numbers were exactly, if they were sequential or not, but our numbers don't start out like six thousand and one.
And those were done in December, correct, the work was done in December?
These, that's what that's.
So that, that, that's still gonna go in twenty twenty-two because we just got it, right?
Correct, we can't write more POs in twenty twenty-one more. So that money now has to be factored into our budget that we have a temporary one now, but it's not in that temporary budget now. So that means we'll have to use more rollover money.
Yeah.
Even though we're already used to it.
Okay, that takes away. Okay. Okay, that's all of that.
On the process, I had communication, a process of having everything rekeyed, that lets you know that I got a price from one vendor and started thinking about it, it's just, it's through the roof, it's way too, way too expensive. So we're going to have to, I'm gonna have to do some more calling around, different locksmiths. We need to get everything rekeyed here and for security, and I got priced at three thousand dollars to do all the locks. And I started asking around, and. for three thousand dollars to do all the locks, and I started asking around, and that's way too high, so we're not gonna do this, this week, we're gonna shop around, get a better price, and, um...
Will they be able to do the keys on the fire cabinets acquired?
Yes.
So like I have just like one key to all of them?
Yes, we'll be able to do that, I, I asked them about that, yep. So, um, okay, so... Okay, so we ready to go, you, you, you got any new business, you might have any new business they wanna talk about, or? We start resolutions?
We start resolutions?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, different than what is in your packet, we've got this in here.
Want to start on the different?
Yep, so this will be oh three. Resolution twenty two dash zero zero three. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve to place township administrator on paid administrative leave until the end of his, to the end of our contract with his services. Jefferson Township placed township administrator on paid administrative leave through the end of his contract effective immediately, uh, copying his contracts attached, uh, we require Steve Wolf to turn over immediately following add-ins, keys, cell phone, vehicle, laptops, computers, all his usernames, passwords, so Buckeye can gain access to all his computers, and it goes on and talks about all that, so, um, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty two dash zero zero three.
I second the motion.
Mr. President? Yes? When is the end of Mr. Wolf's contract?
February 21st.
Of this year?
Of this year.
So after February 21st of this year, we no longer pay him, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The board also is given an option to update, renew, or give them for a longer term at the Canada first five years of agreement. Is also given an option to update, renew, or give them for a longer term at the Canada first five years of agreement, that's what that one statement says, yeah, so they have the op, they have the option to upgrade it after five years.
Thank you.
Did you get a second on that motion?
How, yes, we do have a second, you just, you want roll call now?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Baca?
Yes.